I'd like to reiterate the meeting, back to order. And next item up is energy project, does it not, Mr. Adam Pearce?
Thank you for the chance to be here today. We've got a 23-page report here.
Did you know we were going to have cake when you came?
You always have something. There's, I'm prepared to do a data dive in every building. I'll cut to the chase. The first page summarizes the overall project. As you know, we did major HVAC upgrade at Leavenon Middle School and then some other various things throughout the district, a lot of lighting and some building insulation improvements all across the district last, mostly last summer when this building was completed. So the overall savings target was about a million per kilowatt hours on electricity and then about almost 12,000 CCF, that's 100 cubic feet of natural gas. That's what, that's basically our, if we reach those numbers, then we've met the goal. So the actual savings on electricity across all of the buildings was nearly 1.6 million kilowatt hours, so about 600,000 above the guaranteed target. The natural gas, we're about 20% above the target there. So a target cost reduction between gas and electric of 104,000, an actual of 160,000. Some other savings that aren't reported in this document, we did, we get sewer credits at Leavenon Elementary School and Marion County High School where we were using some water for the cooling towers that wasn't necessarily going to the sewer, so we put sub meters in there to get that credit back from the utility company and that was worth about 3,000 at both schools. And then not included on this as well as was a one-time rebate from Inter County and KU that, KU hasn't paid all of that out yet, they're still reviewing the application, but those rebates are worth about $44,000. So the first year is going to be in excess of $200,000. That would be, so, not excess, but savings in excess of 200,000. So about a $100,000 general fund was as a result of these upgrades. I've got, if you can zoom out, maybe, and go to the next page, I'll talk about Leavenon Middle School because that was kind of the centerpiece of the project. But Leavenon Middle School, just a couple of weeks ago, Scott and I completed the paperwork for the Energy Star applications and Leavenon Middle School scored a 100, which means that it's at the 100th percentile on energy performance. So in Kentucky, and Scott ran these numbers for me a few minutes ago, there's over 1,200, almost 1,300 schools in the state of Kentucky and Leavenon Middle School is the ninth school to ever achieve a 100 on Energy Star. And all of your schools are now, are now Energy Star labeled with this round of applications. And last year, there were 10 out of 173 school districts that had all of their schools to make the Energy Star label. So you're in, you're in good company there. So that's, you can scroll past, that's just a graphical representation of the numbers that I've already shown you there. So Leavenon Middle School, again, we did major HVAC upgrade and lighting upgrades throughout the building. Scroll down, scroll down. About $73,000 was saved in that one building. That was, that was a launch. Again, it was where most of the money was spent on the construction and then most of the money was saved on utilities, yes.
Leavenon Middle School was our newest building. Right, so why was it so inefficient?
It really wasn't that inefficient. The baseline was still better than the average school in Kentucky. It was an all-electric school and electricity per unit of energy is more expensive than gas. So in the wintertime, you're heating with straight electric heat on the old systems, which is very expensive to do. You don't have that anymore. You've got the geothermal HVS system.
When you say we're Energy Star certified in our schools, if we take a school like, for instance, Calgary Elementary is built in the 60s, what, and we're Energy Star certified for that school. If we had a new school, obviously, when we say we're Energy Star for a school built in the 1960s, we're comparing ourselves against other schools built in the 1960s. What is the energy consumption that you might expect to decrease if you were to replace that 19, that circa 1960 school with a school built in 2016?
Well, I think the big problem with that school is the insulation, the par value of the walls and the roof and we made some improvements there that saved a lot of energy. But I believe that, we score these buildings on EUI, energy use intensity, which is BTUs of energy per square foot or something. That's, that's the way you can take one, take all your schools and compare, this one's more efficient than that one. The other, not the same size and they don't have the same number of students, but that's all, we can average that out and bring, take it to an apples to apples. Leavenon Middle School is running at about a 20, 22, 23 KP2 per square foot and Calgary is running at about 45.
What would a new construction, would you, this state of new construction run at?
We build new buildings in the 20s. 20s is a, is a, it's an aggressive target, but it is very real.
So it would be possible to cut the energy consumption for a new building to about half of what we're doing in Calgary?
On a square foot basis.
And what did, do you have an idea what a dollar value would be?
Well, if your fuel types are the same, it'd be half, it'd be half. If you've got a building that heats with gas and then you go to electric, it kind of muddies the waters a little bit. But if you use the same fuel type, the same HVAC system, it would be about half.
How much money do we put into Calgary per year in the estate contract?
I don't know exactly, but the only, we did some side lighting, we did insulation, insulation, not a lot of money. I would say 20, 20,000 or so on a three-plus million dollar grant. It wasn't a big investment.
I'm sure you factored in, I just want to extract, have you factored in the cost of fuel last year as compared to the cost this year and see what the savings are, or can you do that?
We used actual, so if we go back to that first page, that cost is an avoided cost. So you, since we, since you first started looking at this type of delivery, you've had two rate increases with KU since from it. So your cost, or even though you might, your bills might not have been $160,000 or, or, it might not have been $160,000 less than you paid last year because your cost went up. So that represents an avoided cost, not 16 versus 50, because you did have two rate increases.
Okay, and so those figures show that do reflect the rate increases as well?
Yes, so that, that number there, on every building, we took the savings and then the current utility rate and got, and got the value of that and then looked at what the baseline was at the current utility rate and said, okay, that's what you would've spent, this is what you actually spent, so this, then this is what the savings are for building. And there's, there's a chart like that which shows an accumulating, basically, the 12 months. We've got a baseline, which is the red line, the black, which is the target, the guaranteed level, and then the blue, which is the actual. So there's, there's an analysis like that for every building. If you want to review that, let me know if you have any questions. We don't, we don't need to go through all 23 pages.
Well, it looks like that, we don't need to review.
Yeah, I play golf, there's, there's some bars, there's some birdies and there's a couple of bogeys, but we're under the bar.
On the places where there are bogeys, are there things that we need to be doing, that are programs we need to be doing, do we need to bring in consultants or CTA or someone else to tell us what we can do, or we have ones with these old schools that we've basically done what we can with the, with the facilities we have?
Yeah, I think the bogeys are, are like this building, for some reason, even though we replaced some lights and we put in some programmable thermostats, saved a lot of gas, but we didn't save any electricity, which I can't really explain why. All of the schools are actually, the, we're below target on all the schools. The bus garage was another place where we didn't save as much electricity as I thought we would, but it seems like it's doing better this year than it did last year for some reason.
But the good news is, I meant Mr. Spaulding, all of our schools have been rated Energy Star.
Absolutely, and I want to say probably among the best Energy Star average scorers in any district in the state, I'm sure definitely top 10 for sure, if not better. So that being said, in some of these other districts that Mr. Pearce looked to, 10, some of them are small independent districts, maybe have one or two buildings, where we have seven, so we're going to be the third largest district out of those 10 districts with number of buildings that we got to achieve that goal. So I definitely think we're doing some great things to be able to save more money in the general fund, be able to do stuff in the classroom.
And we're comparing the buildings, the age of buildings to the age of the building that, that way. We're not comparing our buildings to new buildings. So we're, we're doing a good job on trying to save energy with the buildings that we have and that's something that we should be proud of. Thank you very much. I'm not sure if you all had any questions, but this is a great one.
More good news.
More good news. That's why we had cupcakes.
Does he get a bat?
We can arrange that.
I didn't hear the.
He said, can you have a bat? I said, I can arrange that. You keep bringing in scores like that, how about that?
One other, one other thing, I know a lot of these things are, you know, on the energy side, HVAC, it's above the ceiling, it's in the mechanical room, you can't see it, but I think there's a lot of things around the district that, as a result of the project, that you can see, the parking lots, I think, are looking better. I think your gyms with the new lighting look better. I noticed tonight, it didn't sound like an airplane was taking off whenever the air came on. I think we fixed that for you here in the boardroom. I notice I could hear a lot better in the back of the, so hopefully there's some things, not just behind, you know, above the ceiling and in the mechanical rooms, but there's some things that, that you got aesthetically clean.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Pearce? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item up, rating house committee update, there are three members here, I'm the committee myself, Mr. Evans and Mr. Scott Spaulding. And briefly, we've had two meetings so far and we are working closely with Mr. Eric Wiseman with the East Bend, Kentucky Historic Preservation Group and, we have two interests, two things going on. One is obviously we want to, people want to save the building. The other thing, also make sure that the Leavenon Elementary School rating plan is there as well and talk about the, you know, to, to leave something like traffic there. James Bragg is also a member of the committee. He, he's going to reach out to the community through Facebook or some kind of petition out there, just kind of get some input from the, from the local community. So basically, we did a tour, by the way, in the first meeting, we all went through the house. Scott led us through there and so it's a grand old house, it's built, we think maybe around 150 years ago or so. And it's a, it's a solid structure and it's, it's worked on it. So either of you guys want to add to that, you may do so. Mr. Evans and Scott?
I think we can first do meetings and discuss what process we may be doing differently with what's currently on the district facilities plan and try to explore all the different options of what that possibly could look like.
We don't have another meeting, just said, yeah, we want some of this process worked through, some of the things worked through the process first before we can schedule another meeting. I think somebody estimated about 150 years old, am I right, Scott?
He's thinking Civil War-ish.
Maybe.
Possibly, not for sure.
Yeah. You pointed out some of these things being replaced in there, some of the woods are flooring, it's time dated, there's been some replacements in there, although it's been put in later on, so some of the wood, some of the artwork and craftsmanship is pre-Civil War things, pretty much. Mr. Evans, Eric Wiseman. Any questions about that? Okay. Next up, GE student drug testing funding update, Mr. Jerry Evans.
As many of you may know, the Marion County Heartland Safe Community Coalition has been the provider of funds to cover our student drug testing program. That program began with that organization providing $5,000 per year for the drug testing program. And I guess it's been in existence for about five or six years at least. Unfortunately, the, their funds come from a grant and this year, they were not able to get the five, as last year, they were not able to get the $5,000 grant, they were able to get, I think, 3,300 last year, Mr. Delancey, am I right? Somewhere around there?
Sure.
This year, they were only able to get 3,000. They're working on a project to try to acquire some other funds through a grant program, but at this point in time, they will be allocating $3,000 for the student drug testing program. And I for one, I'm much appreciative of that, will have to procure or the funds and balance the $2,000 and I don't think it costs us actually 5,000. I think it's been less than that for the past two to three years. But anyhow, we will have to acquire the other $2,000 from other sources, from other finances within the operation of the board to continue the program. I for one am inclined to do that because I think it's a very valuable program. I certainly have had some pros and cons from members of the community as to their value of the program. I think there was eight out of 100 and some that tested positive a few months ago and some people thought that was not a significant number. But if nothing else, I feel it's a deterred-type program. Maybe that's not a good word to use, but if nothing else, I think it deters some individuals from using the drugs and I would be a proponent of keeping it in place. Of course, that's not left up to me, I'm a voice of one of five and we would need to discuss it before we change it. But I'm for accepting the $3,000 and then spending, or acquiring the other money from other sources within the supervision of the board to continue the program.
Any questions? I just want to know what the, the total cost is 5,000, is that what it is for this whole program, for the program?
On an annual basis, the total cost, I think, was less than 5,000.
Oh, okay.
And last year, they provided 3,300. This year, they've been able to acquire only 3,000, but the president tells me that they are looking into, going to another source and trying to obtain at least 5,000. But that won't happen this year. So 3,000 is what we have to work with.
I have two comments. Number one, if it gives one child the excuse that he can tell his friends, or her friends, listen, I can't partake in that type of activity because I might get tested in school, then it's a, it's a useful program in my opinion. I would like to see us look at tailoring the program such that it would not interfere with the instructional day. I would like to see this something that would be done before school or immediately after school so students weren't pulled out of class. If possible, I'd like us to look at that as a mouth. I know that the way that it's done, they're pulled out of the, of the class and sometimes it takes a while to test 50 kids, I understand that, but I think it's a worthwhile program. I think the cost to us, we've been very fortunate that the Heartland Coalition has provided us these funds over the years and I think it's a worthwhile program and I would support continuing it, but I would like to look at other ways that we can maybe implement it such that it doesn't interfere with our instructional day.
Anybody else?
I concur. I think it's a good program. I think you could help three students.
Okay. I agree with that group, for sure. Okay, so go to the next item up, is the financial report.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that we would have a financial report at the next meeting and due to the absence of our finance director, I'm not going to be able to provide that as well.
Okay. Let's go under item four, Student Art Services, the first item up there is Consider Approval of Short School Day. I'm waiting to, okay, there you go.
I move that we approve a short school day for a student.
Identify as number 007-017. Motion made by Mr. Delancey, second by Mr. Jerry Evans. Any questions on that at all? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those close to like sign ayes have it. Item up under number five, Student Support Services. Item A, Approval of Field Trips.
I move that we consider approval of, there's two field trips, Leavenon Middle School Beta Club in Philadelphia and Marion County High School Band to the Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis.
Motion made by Mr. Buck Cecil.
Second.
Second by Mr. Caitlin Reed. Any questions or discussion on those two items? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those close to like sign ayes have it. Item up is Consider Approval of Salary Schedule for NCA TC Principals. Motion, floor open for motion to approve.
I move that we consider approval for salary schedule for Marion County Area Technology Center Principals.
Which will be reversed 7,200, no way to the whole motion, Buck?
Oh, okay, approval of the salary schedule for the Marion County Area Technology Center Principal, which will be reversed 7,200 by the Kentucky Department of Education and range between middle and high school district principal salaries for a base salary with 53 extended days and a 25% stipend.
Motion made by Mr. Buck Cecil. Second by Mr. Caitlin Reed.
Question?
Question by Mr. Evans.
Is this the same position we were talking about sharing with Washington County?
Yes, sir.
So as I interpret this, then there's no need to share that Kentucky PDE is going to cover the whole thing?
It will not. Well, we, we don't know for sure how much the salary will cover until a position, a person is actually hired. And thankfully, Washington County and Marion County share the both, the same attorney, Mr. Chinaman, so he is working with us on a plan on how that inter-agency agreement will work. So once a person is selected, then we'll know if there's a difference in how much. Just had a conference call with Ms. Hawken today, so we're working on that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And that's replacement of the principal, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Most, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close to like sign ayes have it. Item up, five C, Consider Approval of Staffed Physician for NCA TC Principal. Floor open for motion to approve, B C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jerry Evans, second by Delancey, any questions about that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close to like sign ayes have it. Next item up, number five, Consider Approval of Job Description for NCA TC Principal. Floor's open for a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the job description for the Marion County Area Technology Center Principal. I shall.
Motion by Mr. Delancey, second by Buck Cecil. Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close to like sign ayes have it. Number five, Consider Approval of Revised Job Description for NCA TC Counselor. Floor open for motion approved. Somebody. Move by Mr. Caitlin Reed, second by Jerry Evans. Any discussions?
Question. Ms. Lott, could you explain to us how the job description is changing for the ATC counselor?
Actually, the person that we have in that position has resigned and taken on a new nature in their life, opened their own business and so it's moving from a classified to a certified position. So the person will actually have a certification to be a counselor. So that's how it's changing. It's just a different certification or the requirement of a certification.
And this is going to be someone who's going to be working with the ATC students about getting college or career ready and those sorts of things?
Yes, it is and it'll be somebody that works with our middle schools, our high school, Washington County, Marion County and our Area Technology Center and also business and industry. The dual credit courses that we're talking about, one of the things we need to access more of is dual credit courses at our technical colleges and we have very few kids taking advantage of that. We also want that person to help us with co-ops. As you know, co-ops can lead to jobs and so, and we also have got to make sure that we have more students enrolled in courses at the Area Technology Center. Otherwise, we will be in jeopardy of actually losing programs.
Can one interpret this as being lesser salary-wise as compared to the previous position you were saying?
It depends on where they fall in the salary schedule, Mr. Evans. The way the salary schedule is and the number of years' experience, I would anticipate it could be a little bit more if you, if you have someone with more experience.
Any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close to like sign ayes have it. Number five, We Offer Consider Approval of Purchase Three New School Buses. Floor's open for motion to approve.
Motion to approve purchase of three school buses.
Motion made by Mr. Jerry Evans.
Second.
Mr. Delancey.
Yes, question.
Sure.
How much are the buses more expensive this year?
Not much. Base price probably go up about $1,000. It's very paid at market right now for a bus block.
I know they were about $70,000.
About $90,000, about, 2,000 DDA changes in emissions law if you return a fat on the bus to make the region make the environment friendly.
Any other questions or comments?
One more.
Sure.
We usually purchase two or three.
Sure. And period of the year, this year, we're giving two records for us and also one special needs bus. If you all remember back in spring, there was awarded a $40,000 grant for saving children that we're going for purchasing about half of the special needs schools.
Okay. Any others? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close to like sign ayes have it. Number five, We Offer Consider Approval of Change Order Number 1544-01-01 for West Marion Elementary School Roof Project. Floor open for motion to approve.
I move that we consider approval of change order for the West Marion Roof Project. Approval of the change order number 1544-01-01 for West Marion Elementary Roof Replacement of, for minus 19 cents to close out the purchase order.
Motion made by Buck Cecil.
Second.
Second by Delancey.
I have a.
Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Get 19 cents back.
So we are, we are, we're, we're changing this contract then.
That's correct.
You know, I think they did a good job, I think we ought to give them the extra 19 cents.
I agree that we should and I agree that we should change this contract.
All those in favor say aye. Close to like sign ayes have it. Number five, We Offer Consider Approval of Purchase Order, Sun Resheep 16-117 for West Marion Elementary School Project. Floor open for motion to approve.
Some move.
Motion made by Mr. Caitlin Reed, second by Buck. Any questions or comments? If not... If not, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say ayes, have it. Number five, I, Consider Approval for Final Pay Application, number four, for West Marion Elementary School Roof Project. Floor open for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Delane Pixon.
Second.
And second by Caitlin Reed. Any questions? Final pay application. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say ayes, have it. Number five, J, Consider Approval of BG four, four, West Marion Elementary School Roof Replacement. Floor's open for a motion to approve. So moved. Move by Mr. Caitlin Reed. Is that it?
Second.
Second by Buck Cecil. Questions or comments?
I've got a question, but not a response. This one.
Okay, the next item, okay.
No, I'm actually, Adam, the, and I'm not saying this, what was the total cost of that? I mean, we changed that contract, but what was the total cost of that?
Four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars eighty-one cents.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If no other questions at all, this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say ayes, have it. Number, item six, Student Learning and Support, Consider Items, everything through A through N, reporting on is one. Floor's open. Okay, I'll go ahead.
I'll let them back the motion now.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items six through eight.
Motion by Mr. Delane Pixon. Is second.
I'm sorry.
Second, Buck Cecil. Any other questions?
I do. Uh, I'm at the item H, under consent, the memorandum of agreement, where we're going to actually receive the reimbursement for on KDE. I am waiting on final approval to our board attorney, so I just want to make that as a notation, that that's dependent on his review and his approval. So we can either table that and I can bring it back, or, uh, but, but we have got to move forward with, with hiring a principal. We're going to get, I just want to make, there may be a change. I may have to bring it back for a revision.
I, I, floor's open for motion to amend, number six, to table number eight. Will be satisfied.
I move that we table, we amend.
Second, motion made by Mr. Buck Cecil to table, number six, eight, is second.
I second, but I'd like to make a comment.
Second by Mr. Caitlin Reed. Okay. We have.
It is unbelievable to me.
It's not what you think.
All those in favor of number six with the table in H, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say ayes, have it. Back to the main motion. The main motion will be to approve item six, with number H being tabled.
Motion to approve referenced.
I think we're down to motion, sorry. Yeah. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say ayes, have it. Number, item number seven, Announcement of Personnel Actions, is table number four. And the next item up is number eight, floor open for adjournment, for motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Delane Pixon.
I'm sorry.
Second by Buck Cecil. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, say ayes, have it. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here, appreciate it very much. Thank you.